Good evening. We will call to order the September 26, 2017 meeting of the City Council of the City of Fredericksburg. We will be led and invocation by Councilor Bradford C. Ellis, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. Please stand if you are able.
Heavenly Father, send down upon those of us who hold office in this city the spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice that with steadfast purpose we may faithfully serve in our offices to promote the well-being of all people through Christ our Lord. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have, actually have two presentations tonight. The first is very exciting. It is the presentation of the 2017 Highways Administration Environmental Excellence Award. I would like to call on or recognize our City Manager, Assistant City Manager Doug Fawcett.
Thank you, Mayor. Give us just a moment to get our presentation up here. As advertised, this is a good way to start our meeting. The city has, the city and its partners, and we're going to talk about that in just a moment, has been awarded a 2017 Federal Highways Administration Environmental Excellence Award. And before we have the presentation of the award, I want to just give you a very brief overview of the project, show you a few pictures. A very brief history of the project. The project actually started in 2007. The engineering design contract was awarded in 2007. And from 2007 to 2012, we had the engineering design, the environmental permitting, the environmental statement, the preparation of bid documents. We had to obtain quite a few easements and then obtained various agency approvals. In 2013, the actual construction started on the trail. And in 2014, we opened Areas 1 and 2, and that's from the eastern trailhead down by the cobblestone development to US Route 1. That was followed about eight months later in mid-2015 when we opened Area 3, which is from US Route 1 westward to the current western end, just this side of I-95. I want to just run through a few pictures to give you an idea of the project. This is obviously mid-construction. There were a lot of culvert crossings under the trail. This is one of them. You can see the creek there on the right. Here is the excavation, the site development of the section of the trail that runs across National Park Service property, right down, visible just below Lafayette Boulevard. This is one of the bridges out on the western end in Area 3. The construction of the bridges was one of the challenges. Getting the materials for the bridges in was one of the bigger challenges of the project. I want to have another bridge shot here in a minute that will show you something else about the bridges. There is our project manager, Tim Ennis, on one of the first sections that was paved as we were getting ready to finish the trail and open it. And now, I want to work from east to west and just show you a few pictures of the actual trail. This is the eastern trailhead down by cobblestone. All but the locomotive was an Eagle Scout project. Mason Mitchell, Berkeley Mitchell's son, did this as his Eagle Scout project. And we were reminiscing today. That was probably seven to eight years ago. He's in his mid-to-late twenties now, and he did that before he was 18 years old. The locomotive was actually provided by a local business. Kerry Leach helped us with that. This is the back end of the locomotive, and you can see there, you can't see it real well, but there is a map of the entire trail on the backside of that. This is working your way out, actually looking back toward town along the cobblestone development. The first section of the trail is concrete sidewalk that was built at the time the cobblestone development was built. This is working our way a little further out the trail, getting out into the asphalt section of the trail. And as you can see there, that's the half-mile marker. This is the finished curve on the National Park Service property that we saw being developed earlier. Comes out from under the Lafayette, the bridge over Lafayette Boulevard, or the bridge over Hazel Run on Lafayette Boulevard, and gets you back up to Lafayette so that you avoid an at-grade crossing. Here's just some folks enjoying the trail a bit further out. Another nice long shot of the trail there. This is the crossing of Route 1. We have two major road crossings, the crossing of the Bloom Gray Parkway and of Route 1. We actually installed an entirely new traffic signal for this crossing to provide safety for, this is a pedestrian signal, pedestrian activated signal, and it stops the traffic to, for crossings. This then is the section of the trail west of Route 1, working further out toward the interstate. It's a little hard to see there, but that's the two-mile mark, which is west of Route 1, between Route 1 and I-95. This trail user is approaching one of the bridge structures on the trail. There's a better view of the bridge structure. That model there happens to be my wife. I took that picture. This is one of the historical signs on the bridge structure that talks about a house that was in the area. This is one of our many historical signs at points around the city. There is, just beyond that bridge, working further west. This is the other bridge photo I wanted to share with you. These are the abutments for the old Virginia Central Railway. And we were both required and very much wanted to preserve those abutments with the construction of the new trail. So as you can see, the bridge goes over Hazel Run there without touching those abutments. Those abutments are preserved in their current state as part of this project. There's another view of the abutments underneath the existing structure there. There's the short section of trail beyond that bridge. And this is at the current far end of the trail, current western end of the trail, looking back toward the city. You can't quite read it on that sign, but that sign points you to Route 1 at the, this is the western trailhead of the trail. So with that, Mayor, I'll close. I have a couple other slides for after the presentation.
Alrighty. I would like to call forward our Federal Highways Administration Virginia Division Administrator, Ms. Jessie Young and Ann McFrost.
Mayor, good evening, and member of the City Council. It's my honor to be here to present you and recognize your contributions. Like Doug mentioned, it's been a great journey to get this great accomplishment and projects completed, and it's been used, and is also connecting the communities, providing access to employment, and also access to the local history in the project areas. Congratulations on the accomplishment. And just give you a little context of, you know, the accomplishment that you have today. This is recognized by the Federal Highway Environmental Excellence Award, and we do this biannually, and for the past 20 years. And we have focused on the three focus areas, natural environment, human environment, and innovation, and organization process innovation. And then within the three focus area, there are 16 categories, and multi-modal is being one of them. And we only pick one winner for each category. And for this project, the Virginia Railroad Trail Project is the winner for the multi-modal. And I really congratulate you on this accomplishment. And you are not doing alone. City of Fredericksburg has been doing this alone, and in partners with Virginia Department of Transportation, and Golden Consulting, and with, among other contributing project partners. So with that, I just wanted, once again, thank you for this great project, providing connectivity, and also for recreation, employment, and also, you know, get explored to the local historic history part of it. With that, I also want to recognize one of my division employee, Ann McFrost. This project is funded with the Transportation Enhancement Fund, and he is very dedicated and committed to oversee that program, and with that, with his contributions to make this happen. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Okay. Okay.
This obviously is a huge team effort with our contractors and VDOT and our city staff. Doug, I'll turn this back to you, but I want to thank you, and I want to thank our staff and our representatives on FAMPO, and everybody who scoured to get the money to do this, the Park Service who worked with us. It's the most popular thing the city has ever done by far. I get stopped all the time, and I say, "Oh, yes, thank you." But I didn't do it. A whole lot of people did it. But thank you. We are very honored by this award. I'll turn it back to Doug Fawcett.
Okay. As soon as I get my presentation back here. Okay. I do want to, as the mayor mentioned, this was a, very much a team effort, and I do want to, we do have a number of folks here representing a number of the partners of the team, and for the sake of time, I'm just going to ask them to stand as I recognize them. First of all, for the vision and the funding, and part of the funding for the project, your predecessors, and in some cases, you yourselves on City Council, were a part of this project. For project conception and planning, the city's Pathway Steering Committee. And I would ask that we do, we've already met our representatives from Federal Highways, from VDOT. We also have Michelle Shropshire here this evening, and Kelly, our photographer, Kelly Hannan. And they were responsible for much of the funding, technical support, and oversight of the project. The design team is Gordon. Joe McClellan is here in the front from Gordon. We also have Brian Cipriano, who was our main contact for this project. For construction, Falkner Construction out of Charlottesville, Virginia, Rob Hatler is here representing, drove in from Charlottesville this evening to be with us. Construction management, you all are very familiar with Downing Scott. Lawrence Tressler's here this evening, representing Downing Scott. He worked very careful, very much with us on the project. The trailhead construction, I've already mentioned, Mason Mitchell made that. The person in charge of onsite, daily onsite inspection, construction management is a very familiar face, Tim Ennis, our project manager. Mr. Hatler learned why we call Mr. Ennis "The Hammer" during this project. Then other city staff, of course, Mr. Cameron, the city manager, Bob Antosi, our now retired Director of Parks and Recreation, Basama Mean, city engineer, Eric Nelson in his previous position as Senior Planner, Dave King, the Assistant Director, and myself. And so, we also had additional partners on the project. The National Park Service, Kirsten Spalding, Kirsten Talken Spalding is here this evening, our superintendent of our local park service to represent their partners. They worked with us on the easement. I'm sure she won't mind me telling you that getting an easement to, over National Park Service property is, you make a career of it. Not only because of that, but this project itself was a challenge. It's hard to believe, but I'm actually only 34 years old. Yeah. The Advisory Council on Historic Preservation, this was very much, there is a memorandum of understanding among multiple partners to protect, as I referenced earlier, the historic resources of this. The entire trail is a historic resource simply because of its status as having been the Virginia Central Railway. The Army Corps of Engineers was involved, as well as the Virginia Department of Historic Resources. So that concludes our presentation, and thank you all for coming.
Thank you. Thank you again.
I just want to, Doug, as always, does a fantastic job and deserves a lot of credit for this happening, of course, staff. But one thing I do want to say with regards to this, and I know Marcy Parker's here with VDOT, and I want to, they don't hear this very often from me, so I wanted to take this opportunity, Marcy Parker's the current Director of our local district, that getting some of the money for this project at a time when they weren't going to take on any new projects, and VDOT's working with the then-Court Sterling at the CTB, really went to bat for us to get funding that we frankly were not supposed to get to finish part of this project. And I want to take this opportunity to thank VDOT, because they don't hear it a lot when we have meetings at FAMPO. But you guys did a great job, and Kirsten, I know you weren't here at the time, but, and I know Eric, I think Eric can actually, Nelson can actually say he got a lot of his gray hairs from this experience, and I think he would say that. But the local staff here of the National Park Service did a phenomenal job working with us to make sure all this happened, and I just want to make sure you guys are worth recognized. Along with, I know we have pathway partners and everything else, just the community being able to come together, put this project together is absolutely fantastic. And that's frankly one of the reasons we have such success, is we have a great community that's totally involved. But just wanted to say thank you to VDOT, thank the National Park Service and the community, because this was, a lot of moving parts went into getting this done, and you guys would not have happened without you. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, this is truly a night of celebration of great successes in our city. We're going to hear tonight from the City Tree Program. Dave King.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Seeing the trees along the VCR trail is a good segue into the next great presentation of the evening, which is a presentation of our Urban Forest Program. We would like to take approximately 10 to 15 minutes this evening to provide you some information about our Urban Forest Program, give a brief overview of the program, an overview of some of the significant accomplishments that we've done in the recent past, and an overview of the benefits that our trees are providing for the city. With me this evening, to my left, is Ann Little from Tree Fredericksburg, and to my right is Diane Byer, who's our new Assistant Director of Public Works, and will be taking on many of the duties that I've previously had with our Urban Forest Program. And so feel free to reach out to her for any tree questions or information that you may need on our Urban Forest Program. Again, from the previous presentation, you can see that partnerships are, one of the things that really make things very successful in our city. And that goes along with our Tree Program. We have many partners that make our Tree Program so successful, and such a great thing for the city. And so tonight, we want to outline some of that in our Tree Program and show you some of the things that are going on with our trees throughout the city. So with that, without further ado, oh, and also would like to, each of you should have this binder, which gives you some additional background information on our Tree Program. Some of this we'll go over in maybe in the presentation this evening, but some additional information about the Tree Program. So that's available to you. And we also have copies available if the public would like to see the same information. We have that at our Public Works Office. So without that, without further ado, I'd like to turn over the slide presentation first to, and all three of us will be giving different segments of the presentation, but I'll let Diane Byer kick it off.
Okay. The City of Fredericksburg's Urban Forest Program, it's a partnership between the city, the Clean and Green Commission, and the nonprofit organization of Tree Fredericksburg. And in the early part of 2000, many of the older trees in the city were aging out, and they were all planted at the same time, and so they all got to the same level at the same time, and something needed to be done. The urban forest, because trees were being removed, it was starting to diminish, and this led to some really interesting scenarios. This is what happens when you don't have enough trees. In 1986, the City of Fredericksburg joined the Arbor Day Foundation's Tree City Program, and as of this year, the city has been a tree city for 31 years. In 2004, a task force was put together to assess the city's urban forest. Solutions for tree canopy restoration were also looked at. This resulted in the Tree Plan adopted by City Council in 2005. In 2008, City Council reconstituted the City of Fredericksburg Clean and Green Commission. The commission made urban forest canopy restoration one of their top priorities, and Tree Fredericksburg was established at this time to be the conduit for grants and to organize volunteers to help plant trees. Grant money was provided to do some of the early projects throughout the program, and one of the first projects in 2008 was Maury Playground. Seventeen trees were planted, and then shortly thereafter, the barbed wire fence and poison ivy were replaced. We just didn't think that was suitable, and flowering shrubs and a new fence were put in their stead. A rain garden was later added to help mitigate flooding in the park. And again, we're talking a lot about partnerships this evening. This was another partnership effort with the city, Tree Fredericksburg, Dominion Power, and Friends the Rappahannock. In 2008, again in 2008, the Veterans Council financed the planting of the War Memorial. A few years later after that, more trees were added to provide shade for ceremonial In 2009, a third track was added along Railroad Avenue widening the rail bed. CSX funded the grant to plant 120 trees for visual screening and to provide as a sound barrier. The city later added a fence for added security. In 2012, City Council signed an MOU with the Virginia Department of Forestry to increase the tree canopy in the city by 5% over the next 10 years, another partner. The Virginia Department of Forestry funded a canopy assessment for the city that gave the Clean and Green Commission an excellent tool for urban forestry planning. In addition to the Public Works Department, the Parks Department, and the Clean and Green Commission, there are many other organizations that partner with the city to help restore our urban canopy. Some give money, others volunteers. Marstel Day Corporation has held a fundraiser for trees every year, sponsored by many of the top businesses in our region. Since 2010, over 500 trees in the downtown area have been replaced or newly planted. The city is replacing the Bradford pears and other large trees that used to obscure the downtown buildings, and also required expensive pruning every year to keep them off of the buildings. The city is planting a narrower, more appropriate tree that allows the architecture of the downtown to show through, while still giving our visitors and residents shade while they enjoy the downtown area. Studies have shown that retail districts that have shade-lined streets have increased revenues of 18 to 23%, and information on that study is in your packets. We also provide shade for our carriage horses. I'm a big horse person, so that's important to me, and for our sidewalk cafes. We also ensure by using the taller, thinner trees that they don't obscure signs or merchandise for the retailers. After the large sewer project in 2015, the Williams Street Corridor was slated for replanting. This planting project is almost complete, and you can see the difference there that the trees make in the street scape. The problem of unsightly tree wells and the tripping hazards that were created by those and the roots is being addressed with the addition of artificial mulch beds around the trees. The artificial mulch is ADA compliant, which leaves more room for our diners and pedestrians along downtown streets. The city continues to plant trees throughout our neighborhoods. Each year, the Green Committee chooses the areas most in need of trees. And right now is tree planting season, so you may see a lot of these folks out in the neighborhoods planting trees within the next few weeks. If you'd like to join them, please let me or Ann know, and we'll be happy to tell you where they are and what you can do to help. We're starting to see less streets like this and more that look like this, and I think we could all see which one, I know which one I would prefer to live on. With the grant from Economic Development, Lafayette Boulevard was planted two years ago, and the corridor is really starting to green up again, without and with there, in contrast. Flowering crape myrtles interspersed with deciduous trees have brightened that Boulevard The average cost to us in the City of Fredericksburg because of the volunteers and the organizations that we use and the partnerships that we have is about $100 per tree. That's a pretty good deal, because you look at some of the other localities in the area, some in northern Virginia, some in other areas of Virginia, but they're looking at somewhere between five, six, sometimes $700 a tree. That includes, you know, cost of the tree and some of the care and pruning. So if you look at the average cost there for 6,000 trees, that's a pretty big savings here in the City of Fredericksburg. And I'm going to turn the presentation over to Ann for a few slides.
Each year, oops, each of our trees is watered every week for the first year of planting. The survival rate of the trees planted by the city is just over 87%. To compare, the City of Leesburg counts themselves lucky if they have a 50% survival Prior to 2008, the city primarily planted sugar maples, Bradford pears, and crape myrtles. The new city guidelines call for no more than 10% of any species being planted in the city. We no longer plant sugar maples or Bradford pears. They are not appropriate street trees. Bradford's, as you know, are messy and weak, and sugar maples are too large for most utility strips and lift the sidewalks. Since 2008, over 123 different species have been planted. The percentage ranges from less than 1% to 6%, no more than 10%, of course. That data is in your folders. Having tree diversity guards against disease, and we also need a wide variety of trees to fit in narrow utility strips and strips with wires overhead. This prevents all the ugly trees getting chopped off at the top. We also are adding a lot of native trees and blooming trees for beauty. The city could not do this program without our volunteers. Each year, over 500 volunteers, including students, civic organizations, churches, businesses, and area residents, help plant trees, saving the city thousands of dollars per year. The dollar value of volunteer hours in 2016 was over $33,000. This past winter, 16 volunteers took classes for 10 weeks using the Tree Virginia Curriculum and became certified tree stewards for our city. Each of these volunteers has adopted an area of the city to help with minor pruning, education, and outreach. Year-to-date, tree stewards have donated over 942 hours, a value of over $22,000 to the city. The city has planted almost 6,000 trees since 2008. The total cost for planting over the past 10 years is $615,664, which is about $61,000 per year average. Tree Fredericksburg has obtained $194,000 in grant during the same time from our partners to enhance our urban forest program in that same timeframe. to enhance our urban forest program in that same timeframe.
So, as you can see, there are many benefits derived from our urban forest. Many of these benefits are difficult to quantify, but we know them when we see them, such as habitat for birds, noise absorption, beauty, cool shade to walk in on a hot sunny day. And the federal government has created a sophisticated computer program named iTree. This program calculates a dollar value for some, but not all of the benefits that urban trees provide. In the iTree program, the iTree program calculates the benefits of each tree by size and species of that tree. The benefits quantified are stormwater mitigation, increased property value, energy savings, and air quality. This slide shows a 12-inch red maple provides $101 in yearly benefits. To derive a full picture of the benefits provided by the tens of thousands of our urban trees, the city needs to do a detailed inventory of our urban forest. An inventory would be an invaluable tool for the future of forest management. And we are working towards that goal by trying to find grant funds to fund an inventory. In the meantime, here is a rough example of the calculated benefit of the 5,974 trees planted since 2008. The yearly benefits of these trees at 2-inch caliper would be $23,896. When these trees become larger, the dollar benefits increase exponentially. After 30 years, these trees would potentially yield $603,374 in yearly benefits. And over 30 years, these same 5,974 trees could yield up to $18,102,200 in benefits to our city. That's a significant investment. Over $18 million in benefits for a $615,000 investment. Stormwater mitigation is a necessary priority goal of those who live in the Chesapeake Bay Act, who live within the Chesapeake Bay, under the Chesapeake Bay Act. Trees, we know that trees absorb large amounts of stormwater, absorbing excess nutrients and filtering other pollutants, thus preventing them from reaching the bay. This past fiscal year, the city partnering with Tree Fredericksburg planted 679 trees in the city. And there was an additional 114 trees planted along the Fall Hill Avenue for a required reforestation project associated with the Fall Hill Widening Project. I'd like, before I close, like to say a couple of things, which is, our urban forest that we have here in the city of Fredericksburg, I can tell you, is a model for a lot of other cities around the state. As now the Public Works Director in our department, I receive phone calls and messages from other public works departments, from other cities, asking, "How do we do what we do? How is our program so successful?" And it's truly because of the partnerships and the involvement of the community. The staff alone could not do what we do with trees. It's truly a, it's a commitment on behalf of the city as a whole, and also a commitment of yourselves, the council. You have made planting trees in this city a priority. So it's truly a coordinated effort that allows us to achieve such a successful program. I would also like to thank the, as we have pointed out, the tree stewards that have recently been, gone through training and have received their certificates, and we have now authorized to trim trees throughout the city, our young trees, for structural pruning, typically something, again, staff could not do in past years. We just do not have the time and resources to trim our younger trees as we plant them. Typically, you see our crews out there handling the larger trees and the problems that you see with our large trees, but our younger trees have been forgotten about once they were planted. Now, we have tree stewards that are out there monitoring our younger trees, doing structural pruning on our younger trees. And if we do have any tree stewards in the audience, I'd like to have them stand up and I'd like to recognize them. So, again, we have a very successful program, and I think it's for the benefit of our community. And I think it really shows well for our community, things like our trails, our VCR trail, our Heritage Trail, our sidewalks. Everything is much more pleasing for our residents and our visitors because of the benefits our trees provide to our city. So with that, again, it's just a brief presentation of where we've been and what we're doing with our tree program, and I'd like to open it up for any questions you may have.
Yes, Council Duffy.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. It's a great program in the city. And I just want to add, in this planting season, it's a great thing to do with friends, to go get involved, and it's a great way to make friends. So I want to encourage everybody to do that. I did have a question about how the finances of the program are managed. Can you tell us a little bit more about that?
Sure. Well, again, a big thank you goes to the council for adopting a budget for us on an annual basis that allows us to purchase trees each year for planting throughout the city. With those funds, we, with assistance of Tree Fredericksburg, were able to source our trees at specific growers to make sure that we're getting quality trees. We're getting much better quality trees than we had in the past. And the city, we, through our procurement process, we will purchase those trees directly through our, with our growers. And when those trees arrive, they arrive here to the city on our schedule. Tree Fredericksburg, again, assists us by doing all of the tree preparation, washing of the roots, getting them prepared for each of the tree plantings. So, again, the budget that you provide to us, we use by purchasing trees directly from the growers, purchasing our materials, paying the invoices that we have for watering the trees. As Ann had mentioned earlier, another great success of our trees is the continued watering of our trees. Without the watering, we would be losing a lot more of our younger trees than we do now. So we pay for watering through that budget as well.
Yes, Vice Mayor Withers.
Yeah, I'd like to follow up on that, Dr. Duffy. You know, there've been some charges out there that we go through Tree Fredericksburg only. Tree Fredericksburg is nonprofit, is that correct? I mean, nobody gets paid there, do they? I mean...
The gentleman that waters the trees gets $15 an hour. We submit those, we pay his salary, and then we submit those bills to the city. And there's, you know, paperwork that goes with it and shows every tree he waters. Carl and I don't get any funds, nor do any of the tree stewards. As far as the grants go, we get permission prior to administering the grant. We'll contact the city and say, "We have this opportunity. Can we go ahead and apply for this many trees?" So last, for instance, last spring, we had a grant for 163 trees for $10,000. We applied for it. We submitted all the paperwork to Mr. King, and then we were approved. Then Tree Fredericksburg pays for those trees. It's a reimbursement grant. It's not a, "Give us the money up front." So Tree Fredericksburg pays for all those trees. Then we, when we finish, we submit our final grant report to the Forestry Department, the Virginia Department of Forestry, for reimbursement. If we didn't have Carl, this wouldn't happen, because those reports are about 30 pages long, and he does all the work on it. It's amazing. I don't do that kind of stuff.
I just, you know, I just ask that to clarify it, because as you know, there are some folks out there that think you guys make money. Well, you don't. You do it for free. You do it for the city. It's not something you do for pay. And so I just wanted to make sure that everybody understands that out there, that we don't have a misconception of that. So thank you all, all the volunteers at Tree Fredericksburg, for your work. I very much appreciate it. Thank you.
Any further questions, Council Devine?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I wanted to, second and third, I guess, what Vice Mayor Withers and Dr. Duffy have said. But I absolutely want to express my own personal thank you to the Tree Fredericksburg founders, originators, Ann and Carl Little, and the whole staff, volunteer staff, who work so hard. This is a very selfless act towards our community. It's not just the paperwork, although I know that that's extensive, but it is hours and hours and hours of deciding where the best places are, going out and going door-to-door and, you know, city strip to city strip, and, you know, marking and digging the holes and preparing everything. And it is just hours of their time. And it only serves to beautify our community and add to the economic vitality of our community. And so, again, I just want to express my gratitude for your selflessness. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Frye?
Thank you, Mayor Greenlaw. Also, would like to say thank you for everything that Tree Fredericksburg does to make the city better. I want to point out as well, the only sign that I see that says that we are, I think, urban forest, I think it's on Lafayette Boulevard.
We have Tree City signs.
Tree City, yeah.
Been a tree city, I think, for 31, how many years? 31 years.
Yeah, and I don't see, coming in from every angle of the city, we're not taking the opportunity to show that we are. So you've got to be coming from Lafayette Boulevard to see that we are, quote-unquote, a tree city. So be a good opportunity to check every entrance to the city, you know, to let folks know, hey, where we are and what we have going on. But, and that's just, you know, to show the good things that we're doing. But also, I wanted to say to anybody listening at home, or whatever the case, over the years, there had been some, a lot of resistance about trees, and I'll touch base on that real quick. And, long story short, is some areas were receiving, over the years, from the city, let me say the word crappy, some crappy trees. And the trees pretty much make a mess, and some, everybody doesn't have a garage and so on and so forth. So it's like, you know, folks almost have to wash their car in the morning, maybe wash it again before they go to work to see through the windshield. But I just wanted to say that, and even talking to the tree folks, if I can say it that way, I've learned, you know, that, you know, folks are recognizing that, you know, there are some trees that shouldn't be in certain areas. And even with this demonstration, it shows that, you know, that there's an awareness. So anybody who had a problem with a tree before, bypass me and reach out to Mr. King and Ms. Little. But, you know, if anybody has a concern, you know, saying, "Hey, I don't like this tree, and this tree does this, and it, you know, is uprooting in front of my house, and it's tearing up my sewer line, and that's on my property, and I've got to fix that myself." There are trees out there that are designed, you know, for tight spots, residential spots, power lines and all of that. And I've learned that over the years myself, so I'm just throwing the word out there. So if you have a messy tree, reach out and see if we can get you a better one, because everybody deserves a little bit of shade. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. King?
In response to, and first of all, thank you, Councilor Frye. And yes, we do need to kind of toot our horn a little, so to speak, on signage, and that's something we'll look at improving upon. Also, I want to let you know that thanks to the Green Committee and volunteers, again, we have stricken crappy trees from our approved tree.
(Laughter). No longer on the list. Well, it is truly a remarkable partnership that has accomplished much, and it's a big job just managing volunteers. Not to mention going literally door-to-door, because I think people are notified when a tree is coming, and sometimes there are discussions about where it should be, and which kind it's going to be, and that kind of thing. So there's a lot of time spent on that. Ms. Little?
I did get a call yesterday from a lady who wasn't sure if she wanted the tree in front of her house, because she didn't want a big tree. And I use a little thing I always do with, because I recognize she was sort of older, on the phone, and I said, "Well, you know, I'm 72, so I don't expect most of the trees that I'm planting are going to get very big in my lifetime." And there was a pause, and she said, "I'm 96."
Bless her heart.
And I didn't say anything for a minute. She said, "I guess I shouldn't worry." And I said, "You know, every day is a gift."
This is true. We have to think about we're planting for the next generation. Absolutely. But, thank you. Thank you for this report. We appreciate it very much. And most of all, we appreciate the work of our Public Works and Tree Fredericksburg and the remarkable cooperation and partnership that it is. We do not have any public hearings tonight. We have now reached the point where we have comments from the public, from folks who have signed up to speak before the start of the meeting. To be fair to everyone, please observe the five-minute time limit and yield the floor when the Clerk of Council indicates your time has expired. Decorum will be maintained. Comments not relevant to city business or disruptive behavior such as applause are inappropriate and out of order. We have nine folks signed up tonight. First is Ronette Cooper. Ms. Cooper, make sure the green light is on the microphone. It's working if the light's green. If not, push the little button.
My name's Ronette Cooper. Live on Normandy Avenue. And I first want to just thank the City Council for taking time to hear the thoughts and the opinions of people in the community. I know that people are asking, "Why now? Why are we talking about the slave auction block now?" And yes, I do believe that some of it has to do with the events that happened in Charlottesville and also other events in our nation. But I really believe it's because they actually believe that their voice is going to be heard. And so I believe that part of that is to you, a thanks to you all, opening up dialogue and listening. So I just want to say thank you for that. It's not a secret that we're really divided as a community, and even the African-American community seems to be divided on this issue. I, myself, before, I said it should stay in place, and we should have panels up. And I realized on, you know, Saturday morning when I shared, that a lot of that was out of the tension of my heart, that I don't want violence. I don't, anything but violence. And if this is the compromise that we have to have, then let's have this compromise. I also wanted something that says that this slave auction block actually represents a horrific time in our American history, instead of just being there. There were many questions that came to my heart when I saw it of like, was it there, are there racist things behind this, other than this is a part of our history and let's learn a lesson from it, you know? And yes, there are many people that walk past it, and they're struck with it, and they learn a lesson, but there are many people that walk by it, and it strikes great pain. I was one of those that great pain was caused. I do believe that now, seeing that we've had dialogue and that it's been civil, thank God, that I really can express my true desire, and that's to have it removed. And simply because of the number of people that have expressed that it causes pain. Yes, there will be some that will be disappointed because that history lesson's not there anymore, or that a historic marker is moved, but that's frustration, and that might be a disappointment. I believe that's totally different than it's causing somebody pain. And I believe we owe it to ourselves that if it's causing a group in our, in our community pain, and we have the power to remove it, then we owe it to them to remove it. I believe that it's our privilege to help remove that source of pain. And I believe that that actually will help us go on as a city and as a people into a place of healing. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cooper.
Good evening, Council. My name is Aaron Costello. I'm a resident of the city of Fredericksburg, grown up here my whole life. I'm humbled to have the opportunity to speak into a matter like this in such a time of our nation. I don't pretend to know with absolute certainty the right steps forward for our city right now, but I do know that there is a way forward. My prayer is that by God's grace, we will find... will find it together. I do know that this path, should it lead us forward and not backward, must include two essential things as we discuss the auction block. One is repentance and the other is forgiveness. We have an opportunity as a city in this discussion about the auction block to pursue reconciliation between divided communities and races in our city. There is no reconciliation without true repentance and true forgiveness. Repentance is a change of action, not just saying that we're sorry. So in my estimation, whatever action taken, whether we remove the block, put it in a museum, or erect a plaque that describes the atrocities that happened on it, there needs to be a commitment to repentance. And with repentance also comes an invitation for forgiveness. There is no pathway forward for Fredericksburg, I believe, if there is no true forgiveness extended for the wrongdoing of our forefathers and of our current judgments and accusations and prejudices from the African-American community. I don't pretend to understand what a truly difficult and great task this forgiveness is, but I do know that we cannot move forward as a city if there is not true repentance and true forgiveness. This is not at all to say to the African-American community, come on, you've just got to, you've just got to forgive and move on. It's so much more difficult than that, but rather, we do say, the voice of the African-American population of Fredericksburg is so valuable and so important that we, as a city, as we embrace true repentance for the atrocities committed on that auction block, as we take this opportunity and this discussion to search our hearts and commit ourselves to stand against racial prejudice, we also sincerely pursue and ask for forgiveness from the African-American community. Only through repentance, I believe, we can move forward in this. So my personal suggestion for the block is that it should be removed, placed in a museum, and a stand-up plaque erected on the street corner where it was located. And I believe on this plaque should be written the true history of what transpired there, as well as a statement of our city's commitment to stand together as a racially diverse community to pursue unity and as Jesus taught us to love our neighbor. And by God's grace, I pray, our city will move forward in this discussion with these commitments in mind. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Costello. Eddie Hackler?
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to voice my opinion concerning the auction block. I do understand that this is a very sensitive topic and that there is no definitive evidence that this particular block at this particular location is where my enslaved ancestors were sold into a system that is ingrained into the fabric and DNA of this city. Whether this is an actual location or not, let's be clear, the buying and selling of Africans took place, not only in this particular case, at this, at this location, but also in front of the Town Hall building, the old Town Hall building, all along Caroline Street in front of the taverns, as well as other places in this city and surrounding areas. The course of action for the auction block proposed in terms of its removal is insufficient, in my opinion, and that is to move the block to the Fredericksburg Area Museum and replace it with a historic marker that provides instructions or directions to its new location. I'm not sure if those in attendance or the majority of the public have gone to the Fredericksburg Area Museum, but as it currently stands, there is little to know African-American history in that museum at all. There's absolutely nothing that provides information on the contributions of Africans and Africans-American in this, in that museum. So therefore, placing the auction block in a museum that is already devoid of true African-American history is a horrible option, and if approved, I think it would be a disastrous decision. The removal of this block will not erase the sins of Fredericksburg. However, the removal of the block will lead people to believe that those sins have been forgiven and that we now live in a colorblind or post-racial society, all of which cannot be further from the truth. The truth is that African-Americans still lead the way in unemployment. We still make up the majority of the prison population, and our history still isn't being taught in institutions of education. And when I walk around the immediate area of downtown Fredericksburg, I don't recall seeing a black-owned business. Does not the underemployment of African-Americans in the private and public sector and our over-representation in the prison industry complex represent slavery by another name? Could it be that slavery hasn't ended, but that it has merely evolved? And in fact, the auction block may serve as a reminder of that fact. So in closing, I think that the auction block should remain in its current location, and the resources that were going to be dedicated to moving it should be redirected to a benefit, to an organization that benefits African-Americans, or divert the funds to the Fredericksburg Area Museum earmarked specifically to increase the artifacts in that museum and bring awareness of the contributions of African-Americans in the building of the city of Fredericksburg. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hackler. J.C. Law?
My name is J.C. Law. Stay on Maui. I see a lot of new trees down there by the visitor's center, but I don't see any new benches. It's going to be a shame when I go back to Maui and I tell one million people that you guys didn't put the bench back.
Thank you, Mr. Law. Mr. Richard Matthews?
Council members, members of the community, thank you for letting me speak tonight. My name is Richard Matthews. I'm a former police officer from the Kansas City area. I serve as the Community Life Pastor at Awakening Community Church. It's true that history has value, but history's only as valuable as the commitment we make to understand it, to learn from it, and to navigate rightly in the light provided by it. The auction block that stands in downtown Fredericksburg represents a significant blight in our history. The fact that goods were auctioned from this block should make it more repugnant, since this concession admits the reprehensible truth that human beings were reduced to goods without rights, without dignity, and without hope. The issue before the city is how to deal with this enduring symbol of oppression. We currently communicate what it is, but we do not adequately communicate the shame of it, the lesson we learn from it, or how we intend to navigate forward in the light of it. Even in government, we should learn to strive to love well. We should strive to understand and empathize with the whole of our community, and there's a population in the city whose history is directly connected to this block or blocks like it. It is they who must explain the horrors of this block to their children every time they go downtown. Our brothers and sisters most affected by this auction block deserve a community that strives to own the evils of the past and provide a unifying path forward. A plaque rightly designated the site as a seat of evil and slavery or its removal and placement in another location are workable solutions, but I defer to my African-American brothers and sisters concerning the best path to resolution. Their voice must be the most considered voice. Whatever the decision, let it be coupled with a commitment to, in truth, stand together, move forward together, and to do justice together. This community can be a catalyst in the destruction of racism and injustice, not just locally, but for the whole nation. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews. Hashmel Turner?
Madam Mayor, City Council staff, citizens, I'm Hashmel Turner, as you all know, and I live in 1909 New Kent Street, 22401. Come on behalf of the faith community, as we have gathered, we have had prayer rituals, we have discussed this as a matter of much concern to our city. The slave auction block is a barrier that turs our desire to unify. One of the things based in the faith community is that we are concerned about building bridges, not erecting barriers or walls. You heard me, no walls, but we are building bridges. And so, we realize that 11 o'clock on Sunday morning is the most segregated time in our American society, and it affects even here, the city of Fredericksburg, the 11th hour on Sunday, the most segregated. We desire, as a community, to become unified. We say we want to get past those atrocities and all of the bigotry and all of the suffering that was administered to people that look like me, by people that look like most of you that sit around the horseshoe. So how can we move forward and forgive if we continue to have reminders before us to say, this is what a people that does not look like me did to a people that looked like me? So why should a people that look like me want to be reminded of what a people that don't look like me did to me? If that makes some sense, I hope that you can understand. But I have another scenario, and then I'll take my seat. There used to be, back in the day when our people were enslaved, they had the big house. There were people that looked like me that worked in the big house. There were people that looked like me that worked in the fields. Now, my family per se did not work cotton fields, but tobacco and planted and harvest produce. But there were some in the big house, because they were in the big house, looked down on those of us that worked in the fields. Now, I can say to you that after the Civil War, it was said that enslaved people were set free. So I'm thinking back as a reminder, where there was someone that beat us over and over and over again with a whip. And when they said that, well, the Civil War has set you free, but look, I'm going to hang this whip up on the wall where you come and go, and I want you to see that whip there, because it's a reminder of what I used to do to you, and if you step out of land, it's subject to happen to you again. So the auction block, I don't need that to be a reminder of how my ancestors were treated here in the city of Fredericksburg. That is my whip. When I walk by, it's a reminder, you stay in order. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Turner? Gabrielle Guy?
Thank you for your time. As a resident in and around Fredericksburg for more than twenty years, I have been proud to witness the area grow and change. Some of the most prominent changes are visible in the historic downtown area. The advent of new shops and restaurants has attracted new visitors from all over the country and world to tour and witness our history. One of those artifacts happens to be on the corner of William and Charles Streets. It is a slave auction block and marks a period of our time in which human beings were sold like cattle and any other good. In present day, it serves as a stark reminder of our country's past and how far we've come. Just down the street, you will see a placard with the history of a sit-in that happened during the Civil Rights Movement that was a direct result of slavery. However, it is not being debated that that be removed. History shouldn't be erased, and original landmarks should remain, even if they implicit painful or uncomfortable feelings. There aren't many vestiges, original vestiges left of that time period, and I believe it should stay as a testament to our progression as a society. Thank you again.
Thank you, Ms. Guy. Ashley Bradshaw?
Madam Mayor and Council members, thank you for giving me this opportunity to share with you. My name's Ashley Bradshaw, and I live here in the city. I've lived here since junior high, and I have loved this city very much with all of its rich history. My husband and I both love the history. My husband was raised here as well, and we now are raising our five children here. And part of the thing that we love about the city is the history and going on walks and being able to show our children the history of our nation, history of our city, and how this was really the birthplace of our nation. Virginia and Fredericksburg is rich in that history. I remember the first time I was introduced to one of our city's most gruesome and shameful moments of history through the slave auction block. I wasn't introduced to it for the first time that I saw it. There were many times that I walked past it, not knowing what it was. I didn't really give it a second thought. It just was an ugly, concrete thing sitting right there. But I remember the first time I found out what it was, and it was a quick, somebody was quickly telling me, as a, I think I was fifteen or something, somebody was quickly just mentioning what it was. I was like, oh. And it grabbed my attention then, and so since then, as I've passed by it, there are times that I take a moment to just reflect, but there are also many times that I'm walking and I just walk right past it, and I don't feel like it's given the appropriate time I never realized until recently that this auction block causes such pain to many in our city, many residents of our city. And I was very ignorant for a while. Until recently, I have many, many friends, African-American friends, who have spoken to me, who have shared how hard it is for them to walk past it, how much pain really they feel based on their own ancestors possibly being sold as slaves, sold as, as cattle would be sold, treated horribly, horribly. And it really moves me every time they've brought it up. But I'm ashamed to say that I was ignorant of this pain, because I am not. My ancestors were not sold on that block. I personally feel that the auction block should be moved to a museum or a place where those who see it are in a place to reflect and honor those whose ancestors were sold upon it, or perhaps sold upon it. However, I also know that there are many in the African-American community that have differing opinions. So really, though it matters what the city and all its residents feel about this, I really feel that it is very important that we let our African-American brothers and sisters make that decision or let their voice be heard even higher than my own or people that look like me. I feel like that's very important. My hope for our city is that our city, in this moment and time in history where there's much racial division and, and high emotion in our, in our nation, my hope is that our city will be a place where, to be called a beacon of hope, a place where we're responding to this sort of thing in love and listening and not just looking out for our own interests as, as white people, but also allowing our black brothers and sisters to speak. And I want, I want us, as a city, to be known in this place and time in history as a place that listened and, and loved more than just looking out to our own interests. I hope our city will make a print in history. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bradshaw. Scott Vezina, did I say that correctly? Scott? All right, I presume that that gentleman has left, and that concludes the speakers who've signed up.
Madam Mayor, I was signed up with Tanya. I received a phone call three weeks ago that I was signed up to speak to Faith Childress.
You received a phone call, yeah?
From Tanya, saying that I...
That, yes, go ahead, go ahead, Ms. Childress.
My name is Faith Childress, and I live on William Street here in the great city of Fredericksburg. And I also want to speak on the slave block. As Americans, we often speak about our rights. When legal and political discussions arrive, this... When legal and political discussions arrive, this often involves competing rights. Situations like these call for us to come together, to compromise, to prefer at times someone else's right over our own for the greater good of our neighbor and our city. It is a moment, this moment and on this issue, I think it is incumbent upon each of us to do what is necessary and right to promote racial healing and unity within our city. With regard to the slave block, I firmly believe that it should be the African-American contingency within our community, whose voice should be heard the loudest, whose opinion should bear the most weight, and whose rights should be prioritized. A stone, a relic of history, an artifact, a flag, a statue should never be more valuable to us than pursuing healing of legitimate pain. This piece of history has called some of our friends and neighbors. As a community, it is my hope that the city of Fredericksburg will be a leader in our nation as to what healing of racial division and living together in unity looks like. This is not a matter of stripping away history or rewriting it. Rather, it is about putting it in its correct context, where everyone who carries this history is included, bearing at the forefront of our minds that the history that we are discussing memorializes the dehumanization of an entire group of people. As one of our friends who can trace her ancestry back in this community from any generation said about her two young children, African-American children should not have to grow up in the shadows of these statues and artifacts that are speaking to their dehumanization. I've heard, maybe not this evening, but in our discussions on Saturday and last month, I heard many have compared this to what was done in Germany post-World War II. However, I respectfully disagree with many of these comparisons. There are a couple of key things that inform my opinion on this issue. As a young adult, I spent a couple formidable years in Nuremberg, Germany. And professionally, I worked for a European-based NGO representing Jewish communities at the international institutions like the United Nations and the European Parliament. And what I know about what was done in post-World War II Germany is that the Jewish voice was heard the strongest. It was their decision, their opinion that helped keep the concentration camps. However, in Nuremberg, one of the things that struck me was Hitler's concentrate, the stadiums where he held his rallies, they were left erected. However, they were not fixed to become more comfortable. They were not, they were left unfinished as a cold, uncomfortable place to go and turned into a museum. However, they were not left unblemished. An architect and an artist came in and like a javelin, put a spear through it, marking that was a very high dis, cutting through, slicing through of that regime. And so, I don't think it is simply that we can compare these issues to what happened in Germany, other than to say that as a Jewish community was, their opinion was held the strongest there, so should our African-American community hear. So moving these things does not get rid of racism. However, it may help heal the racial wounds, bring peace to the hearts of our fellow citizens and friends where there have been, there has been a history of racial trauma, and bring the city unity. If so, if this can help with these things, then let us move it. I choose not to idolize a stone, a statue, a street name, an artifact, even history itself, over and above the unity of living with my neighbor and peace. So please let us allow the African-American community to be this voice we hear the strongest. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Childress. All right, I think now we may have concluded. I'll check with my clerk here, all the speakers who have signed up ahead. We come now to the item seven, which is the council agenda. Does any counselor wish to add any items to the council agenda? Counselor Frye?
Mayor Greenlaw, can I add an item and name it? Bragg Hill Changes? Is this for me to discuss?
All right, that would be item seven B.
Yes.
Bragg Hill Changes. All right, any other items to be added to the council agenda? All right, well then, item seven A is my, Counselor Frye and my agenda items on the slave auction block removal question. As all of you here, I'm sure, and many of in the listening audience will recall, Counselor Frye on August 22nd agreed to allow, the council on August 22nd agreed to allow Mr. Frye and me to work with the city manager and staff to form a plan of action on the slave auction block. Excuse me. Leaves have been giving me a fit. To form a plan of auction on the slave auction block, with the plan due back to September, due back to the council on September 26th tonight. This was in response to Counselor Frye's request to remove the slave auction block item. With the city's authorization, we immediately began work. There was a working group that consisted of many members of the city staff and Counselor Frye and myself, who presented two options to the public for consideration. We gave the public two chance, two, at least two chances to speak, to participate in online public comments through a forum that we put up online, and to participate in a community forum. The options that we presented reflected the basic choice of leave or remove, but they sent out a very specific, more specific options of removing to a museum, possibly the Fredericksburg Area Museum, or leaving in place with better, in a better context of more documentation. I will tell you that our community really came through. We cannot thank you enough for the number of thoughtful and sincere and well-fought, well-fought-out comments that we received. We received a total of 602 online public comments, 26 people spoke at the public forum, and 37 more wrote letters or emails. If you contacted the city in any way, if you called and you spoke to someone over the phone, you sent an email to a counselor, it's in the information that we had before us. Regardless of how the council concludes this discussion, we can be assured that we have a community that's engaged, and that this council will continue to engage the community in whatever solution is found. And most importantly, that we will engage the community in a representative way and assure that the African community is involved in whatever decision or solution is made. So I thank you, Fredericksburg, and its environs. It wasn't just from the city. I know everybody's interested in the breakdown, and here it is. Of the, now, let me make sure I've got the right page in front of me here. Of the 602 online comments, 363 selected the first answer, which was to keep it in its location, but to provide a more prominent public space with better documentation of what happened there. 127 people said replace with a historical marker and move it to a new location, possibly the Fredericksburg Area Museum. 112 selected item C, which was neither of the above options. I actually went through and took a good look at those item C ones, and the item Cs, many, well, actually, 66 of them, wanted the block to stay in place but did not like the suggestion of how to, you know, how to deal with it there. And so, and many of the item C, those who wanted it moved, wanted it moved, but didn't want it moved to the Fredericksburg Area Museum or had another suggestion. There were many wonderful suggestions made, actually. The further breakdown, in case you're interested, is that of the total responses of 602 that were online, 209 were from the city of Fredericksburg, according to the address given us, and 322 were from Stafford or Spotsylvania County. 66 were from somewhere else. So we had very predominantly local comments. Counselor Frye?
Thank you very much, Mayor Greenlaw. First, before I even get started, I'm going to say I'm very honored to serve the city. As I'm sitting here and I'm listening to everything, and I realize exactly what's going on right now. As the only African-American council member sitting here, I just want to say I'm honored. I have to say that first. I have to, to know that, you know, it could have been my ancestors on their slave block with no rights, no voice, and to sit here today and actually have a voice, it's a big deal, and I'm honored to, I don't care if we talk about potholes, I'm honored to speak on it, considering the fact that, you know, folks didn't have a voice at one time. So it is a new day, and I'm proud to be a part of it, along with everybody else on the journey. So now that I have that out the way. I'll just go to, I say quick, and I think you guys know how this goes, but I won't do too long. But there was, there were a lot of online comments and petitions and all kinds of things circulating, and about the slave auction block. Whatever caused it, I don't like shouting out other locations and their issues. We're in the city of Fredericksburg, but whatever caused it, it happened, and we can't deny it. And what I decided to do was approach this with leadership position to get a grasp on what was going on to the city of Fredericksburg before anything negative happened. So the point in bringing this to the table last month was to have a hold on what's going on in Fredericksburg, by Fredericksburg, by the council. And thank you to the council for allowing myself and Mayor Greenlaw to try to come up with an action plan, because sometimes your heart can make you do something, and, you know, it's not necessarily the right thing to do. And I'm honest enough to say I'm patient, to try to figure out what's the best thing. I can be aggravated, agitated, just like anybody else out here, but, you know, sometimes you have to take a deep breath and take your time. On the issue of, that we're speaking to tonight, I brought it to the table, slave auction block removal. And I stand firm on that position for removal. And there has been a lot of, and I won't echo everything, well, let me just say, everything that Mayor Greenlaw said about the process is absolutely true, and some of the comments that came, it was an open door. We did an actual forum. We did it within two or three weeks. Everything's organized, and the door is open, so we are listening. We can't, myself, I'm not going to comment on everything that everybody says, but I want you to know I do hear you. But one thing for myself, and I'm one man, when, there was a prayer vigil that was held about a month ago, and I'll tell you guys why I'm sticking to my guns on my feeling. There were some individuals, I've told the story a few times, I'm going to drink a little bit of water, say it this last time. There were three, there was four guys total, three Caucasian guys, one African-American guy. And five or 10 minutes after the prayer vigil, I was kind of camped out across the street looking, because I care about my city, and I was watching what was going on just in general, just to suck it all in. And these guys did a mock auction. So, the three Caucasian guys, they called off numbers. The black guy put his hand on the block, he stood in front of the block, as if he was the guy that was being auctioned. And then, you know, a few of these guys, after they ran, rambled some numbers, they said, sold, sold, sold. This is not an artificial story to boost up my feelings or my, whatever I feel about it. I actually have it recorded, so it's real. And when that happened, you know, not saying I'm not listening, but it happened, you know, not saying I'm not listening in the last 30 days. That happened, it took me over the edge for a decision-making person in the city of Fredericksburg. And by seeing that, you know, it took my breath away, like it kind of, you know, takes some folks' breath away when they walk up on the block, but just to see that. And, you know, my thing is, the only thing, the only way that we can end that type of nonsense is if the block is not there. So on that note, instead of me going on and on and on, first I want to say I'm honored once again to be a member of this Fredericksburg City Council. And now, I would like to make a motion, which is, if everybody was following, it's more or less to the auction, excuse me, to the option, shouldn't say that, more or less to the option B that we presented, which is, it didn't specifically say Fredericksburg Area Museum, but it said that Fredericksburg Museum, it said that Fredericksburg, option B said, removal of the slave block, and don't quote me on it, but removal of the slave block. Matter of fact, let me read it. Option B that was released by the city. Option A was to keep in the current location, but I'm not going to go through that. I'm going to auction, option B. That's a shame that I'm seeing auction. Option B, replace the auction block. I would like to make a motion to replace the option block with a historic marker and directions to its new location, likely, not specific to the Fredericksburg Area Museum. Simple as that. That's my motion for removal.
Second, understanding it's under discussion.
The motion has been made and seconded for removal. Counselor Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to also thank the public for all the involvement we've had in this. This has been a very civil discussion. And one of the interesting things I've kind of taken away from this before I get into my remarks, and I think it is incumbent upon all of us to explain to you what our thinking is on this issue and why we have come to the decisions that we have. The one thing, regardless of what side of this discussion you are on, most everyone basically harked back to a fundamental concept of this nation on which we were founded, that all men are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights. That is the goal that everybody in this room, no matter what side they are on, agrees is where we need to be going. And I'll say it to you right now, no, we haven't gotten there yet, and we still have a ways to go. And that is why we are having this discussion this evening. History is taught to most of us in school today as names, dates, and locations. My degree's in history, and I've never understood why we approach history in that manner. History is the story of us as a society and as a community. More importantly to me, which I think gets lost in our discussions on history, is we kind of detach ourselves from it, because we look at great men or events and what these people did. And we leave out of that discussion something very, very important. Whether it was the American Civil War, where my ancestors joined from Maine, Wisconsin, wore the blue uniform, came down here and fought, whether it was the Civil Rights Movement with water cannons, dogs hanging in lynchings. with water cannons, dogs hanging and lynchings, the ultimate decider of the fate of the nation were not great leaders. I'm not taking away from the fact that they had great visions and everything as such, that they motivated us. But ultimately, it was you and me standing up, leaving the safety of home and family to go and fight or stand up for something that we believed was important enough, and from that, we have moved forward. For me, items like this, and again, I think it's very important, we've had discussions on who we should name and have monuments for. We should have monuments in each of our communities to the people in our community. The one part of this discussion that we've really not talked a lot about in all this in the last few weeks is the future and the generations coming after us. What lessons are we leaving for them so they can move us forward? I don't think anybody in this room is going to disagree that our generation, as great as it has been, and the advances that have been made, are going to bring us to the finish line. We're not going to do it. It's going to take another generation or two to get us where we need to go. So how do we prepare them to make those steps, to understand what it may cost and what is at stake to move us to that goal line that we all hear, regardless of what we are, where we are, who we're from, we all want to see and get to? It is important for us to understand what has happened, how it happened, and how it was stopped, or how we advanced. As human beings, we are capable of great evil, and we are capable of great good. And it is trying to make us understand and take that message for the next generation, which is going to get to understand that concept, what we are capable of and what we should be doing, that is critically important if we are going to cross that finish line. I understand, well, I don't want to say understand, I cannot express, as has been expressed here, the feelings of members of this community with regards to that slave block. My family was not sold there, nor was any of my family ever sold. So I am not even going to try to tell you that I can understand what that means to you. But I would ask you to think about one thing in this discussion, again, looking down the road. As much pain as it is, pain sometimes is a critical lesson for us to understand what has happened to us as a society, what were the mistakes that we made to make sure we do not make those mistakes again. For a lot of us, to see that block, you're right, it is revulsion, it is shame, it is pain. And from that, after that initial response, the next question that should hit you and hit the next generation and the children coming before us, is an understanding of, what is my role to make sure this never happens again? What is my role to move my community, my state, my country, towards the goal that we all hope to achieve? We cannot forget our history. We have moments of, we are all proud of, and we have moments that we are all, as we are discussing here this evening, frankly disgusted with. But that is what has made us as a nation, that is what we have learned from, and hopefully from those lessons, we become better people and move on. And it's that reason, when you take something and you put it over to the side, it kind of, you detach it from the community. You put it off and said, "This is something that happened way back when." Well, guess what? If you look at what has happened even since 1865, with killing fields in Cambodia, mass exterminations in Germany, Red Terror, you go down the list. Man's inhumanity to man has continued, and we, us, have a role to hopefully stop it from happening. And more importantly for us, and we have some people in this room I have the greatest respect for, because you've lived through a time in our history where, as Councilman Fry noted, no vote, no voice, and you were the ones that sat and fought that battle and got us to where we are today, and we owe you a great thanks for that. So thank you very much for that. But I think we would all agree that to keep this motion going, because you all have done your job, you have done great things, it's time, as in all cases, that we've got to pass the torch to the next generation. And they need to understand what you lived through, what your grandparents lived through, and what you did to move the ball forward, to get us closer to that ideal. And it's critical that they understand these things if we are to continue to advance as a nation. What is great about this community is we have a discussion, and we do not all agree, but we all agree on what the goal is. And in my opinion, that marker, and I understand that it represents the people and everything else like that, is an important tool, not just, I'm not even looking at us, I'm looking at generations ahead of us, so they can understand what has gone on, what has been done to stop it, what has been done to move us forward, and then hopefully they ask the question to themselves, from this, what am I going to do again to stop it from ever happening again? And what am I going to do? And understanding, again, the sacrifices that made, not only through slavery, through the civil rights movement, through World War II, through World War I, Vietnam, you name it, Americans stepped up to the plate, gave their lives, sacrificed time, effort, limb, family, to move this nation forward, and they need to know that story. And it's critical that they see it in the context in which it is. And I do hope that if we can move forward and leave it there, and I agree with Mayor and I agree with Councilman Fry, that we need to make sure that in doing so, we present it in such a way that it achieves that goal. And finally, guess, I understand Counselor Fry's comments with regards to the incident he saw. The fact of the matter, people, there are asses out there, and there will always be asses out there. That's not going to change. The question we have to ask ourselves is, are we going to let them dictate to us or drive us to making decisions that are contrary, or frankly even give them a podium to stand on to talk about it, instead of keeping focused? Because I think the stories that people could have about that block, for the most part of the most Americans that see it, come away with the lessons that they need to have. I would rather not see it moved and lose those lessons because of, frankly, a small group of asses. So I hope we can, no matter what the decision is, and I mentioned this at the very beginning of this discussion when we went down this road, to me, it was critically important, as important as this decision is how we arrived at it. And I think we've done a great job as a community, and I also want to compliment my fellow council members, in having this discussion in a civil manner, listening and moving this discussion forward. Because guess what? This discussion isn't ending tonight, regardless of what happens. We all know there are other discussions that we need to have about our history and about our society and how we interact with each other, and those need to continue. And I hope regardless of how the decision comes out tonight, and I think I meant it quite clear, I would like to see the slave block stay there for the reasons stated, but this discussion needs to continue, and it needs to be continued, as it always has been under, you look at Fredericksburg history going way back when, we have always been able to come together, for the most part as a community, to help solve problems and get things done. And I hope that will continue into the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Devine?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to say that after thoughtful and often emotional feedback from many members of our community, and careful consideration of the options before us, I do believe that keeping the auction block artifact in its original setting is the appropriate option. I realize that some will be disappointed and may be disheartened by this decision or this move, and I mean no disrespect, nor to cause additional pain. I've been very moved by the raw emotions of the speakers at Saturday's forum, by emails and phone calls received, as well as by residents stopping me around town to discuss this proposal. In fact, we've all alluded to the fact that our ability to have deep emotional dialogue about this issue speaks to the strength of our community. Several speakers and audience members at Saturday's forum expressed that they had arrived feeling one way and changed their minds after listening, and this occurred in response to both options. What I hope we can agree on is the need to honor and respect the terrible history that this artifact has borne witness to, that the story of the African-American struggle, strength, survival, and success within our community be much better told and displayed, and that this is just one step towards doing that. So I would like to offer a substitute motion to pursue option A, which would be keeping the block at its current location with the reverence and respect that it deserves. Thank you.
I'll second.
All right, we have now a substitute motion before us, and that motion has been made and seconded, and that motion will be voted on.
Seconded.
Counselor Ellis? Counselor Duffy, you had your hand up.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. It's very humbling to sit here and listen to all the heartfelt and well-thought-out, well-informed views that we've had over the last few weeks. And as a one-time professional historian, I want to tell you, I feel like I've been through many graduate courses in the last few days, and I really appreciate how much I've learned. You know, I have given some thought to these kinds of issues, but I have been really schooled in what white privilege means, in ways that I haven't understood before, you know, did on an academic level, but not certainly in this scenario. It's very troubling to me that so many in our community don't, aren't comfortable that this artifact has been just laying around, kind of unadorned, as if not thought seriously about, and it does merit great and serious consideration, as it has in the past few weeks. But I want to talk just about a couple of things that I've been struck by, and then tell you. You know, I'm generally in favor of the substitute amendment, and I'll explain why. First of all, I've obviously been struck by the emotional response to the slave block, but I've also been greatly concerned about the issue of disrespect to it and for the issue of enslavement, and the issue of vandalism, I think is also important to think about. But I want to go back to a comment tonight by Mr. Hackler, who talked about the fact that the auction block does serve as a touchstone for not only the process of enslavement and of selling humans, separating families, bringing great cruelty, but it also speaks to the continuing legacy of racial prejudice and lack of opportunity. You know, you mentioned rates of incarceration and rates of unemployment, that this issue isn't past. You know, it really is with us in powerful ways. And because of that, I think it is incumbent upon us to leave it where it is, to tell this story that continues to be lived by people, not only in this country, in this town, who feel a lack of respect, but also in this country and the world. And that here is something that we need to confront, this terrible things that people do to each other. And that, I know it's very difficult to suggest that we do this linked arm in arm, but I think that this terrible tragedy of American history needs to be laid bare. And I regret, deeply regret, that this brings more pain to people already paint. But I think that that's the way forward. I know, and I'm sorry. And I can't know the depth of the pain, and I can't convince you of the depth of my sorrow, but it is true, what's happening. And I only hope that we as a community learn from this process and know that this painful legacy continues in our midst, and that we are more careful in the way we work to improve our society. But those are my feelings on the issue, and I thank the mayor and Mr. Fry for leading this effort. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Duffy. Vice Mayor Withers?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm also going to support the substitute motion, but I'm going to support it with the caveat, and I think this council will agree, that this is just the beginning of this story on the block. I would trust that we would get the input from the community on how to honor this block and tell the story that needs to be told in a way that, in a way that it needs to be told. So I won't say, it's been a lot said, I agree with a lot of it, so I'll just let it go with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Ellis?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I also want to thank our community for the example we've set, the dialogue we've had. I think we've set an example for not only Commonwealth, but the country on how to have a difficult discussion and be very respectful of everyone's opinion. Now, I've learned a lot during this process, as I have with any controversial issue that's been brought before this body, whether I agree with someone or not, I certainly learned something, especially learned something from those I don't agree with on issues. On this particular issue, I do find myself in the majority of those who responded online, those who emailed us, and certainly those who spoke during Saturday's forum, in that I feel it should be, should remain, but certainly placed into a more complete and more accurate context. Thank you.
Thank you. I've been very moved by the powerful and honest and truly sincere comments made by everyone who spoke to us in whatever manner they did on this particular item. So many comments clearly indicated that our community, our citizens, listen to each other and do have concern for each other, regardless of how they felt about the particular options given. There's truly, I can think of nothing that speaks more profoundly of the evil of slavery than an auction site. To stand there where someone stood with a price on his or her head, with no choice over his or her future, and quite possibly separated from his or her family, is so moving and so horrible. We can't understand each other without knowing what we've been through, without facing the truth, and in this case, without facing our really horrible truth of the history of slavery. But that block reminds us that slavery was a terrible system, and without that understanding, it's too easy to romanticize slavery and romanticize the history that so many of our African-American brothers and sisters have experienced and have known in their own families. I was particularly moved by comments by descendants of slaves who were actually sold on that block, and some were moving to keep it there, because they wanted to, wanted people to understand and felt. So we have, we have, I think, a challenge here to make it appropriate. I am going to support leaving it in place, but we need, we are challenged to make sure that it's presented appropriately, and in a way that offers a prayer for the souls of those who were sold, that offers a prayer for reconciliation and healing in our nation, that offers a prayer for understanding. that offers a prayer for understanding. And very definitely, I think the motion implies, and the actual option implies, that we need to have community input and serious consideration given to, if it remains, how it remains, and how the story is told, and how the respect is shown, as well as facing the horrible truth of the evil of slavery and the evil of treating a human being like property. So I would say that, and I think the maker of the motion implies this as well, that we will charge the city manager with receiving community input and considerable input from our African-American community on how this should be treated. I do agree with the comments that this is the most affected part of our community there. So I will support the motion and an ongoing effort to better document, you know, this artifact in its place. Counsel Frye.
Thank you, Mayor Greenlaw. And I want to do this for clarity, because even I sometimes sit here after 15 minutes, it's hard to understand what the motions are, so I want to be clear on this. I made the motion for removal, and there was a second substitute motion for keeping it there, and that's what we're voting on now, correct?
That's correct. When a substitute motion is made, the substitute motion is voted on.
That is right. And, thank you. I'm just, I'm trying to make it clear for everybody, and I want to say, for the substitute motion, absolutely do not agree to the substitute motion of keeping it here. So I will be voting against that motion of keeping the block. So I'm for removal, so if that's the case, I'll be the nay.
What was the black light breakdown of the online vote?
Excuse me, Gay. We did not ask people to state their race. We only asked for an address. So we cannot answer that question. I should have made that clear when I gave you the numbers. But we did not ask people to state their race in the online comments. So we do not know that answer. That is the answer. Excuse me, I can't start a dialogue at this point. I apologize for that.
Madam Mayor, I called for the question.
All right. Vice Mayor Withers has called for the question. Please cast your votes.
I'm lost, so we're going back to this motion?
We're voting on the substitute motion. Mm-hmm.
Motion passes six-one. Frye voting against.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make an explicit motion to direct the city manager to form a working group, so that as we move forward, he can include those members of the community, actually, the community at large, to have a say in the process as we move forward.
Second.
All right, thank you. Please pass your votes.
Motion passes six-one. Frye voting against.
So, well, I thank you very much, and I thank everyone for their participation. It is with great deference and respect to all opinions that council has made this decision Consent agenda, does anyone wish to remove any item from the consent agenda?
Madam Mayor, we have one more item on the council agenda.
Oh, we have seven B. I apologize. Counsel Frye, Bragg Hill, change.
All right. Mayor Greenlaw, thank you very much. I just wanted to touch base real quick, there's no action or anything, but the item that I added is Bragg Hill, I said change, and I don't know if that's the proper word, but I just, I want to touch base on something. The Bragg Hill area, I guess, with some of the redevelopment and everything, one thing that I just recently learned was that, excuse me, the 7-Eleven at Bragg Hill is closing down. And I'm hoping that we can, in the future, I talked to, I did discuss it with the city manager, because when I found out, I was, it threw me back a little bit. When we have businesses like that and corporations, this is a corporate store, by the way, it's a franchise, but it's ran by, you know, 7-Eleven. And I don't know what we can do on this situation, we can't do, and I did ask the store owner, and, you know, what kind of help could the city be in this situation? And at this point, all avenues are extended, and there's nothing that they can do to save the 7-Eleven. And it may not sound like a big deal, but Bragg Hill, you know, has been pretty much, long story short, when I was born, that's where my family moved to. It was the thriving, when my family came here from Georgia when I was an infant, that was, it was a thriving place, tennis courts, pool, everything. Over the years, Bragg Hill and that whole area has had a bad label, and it's just sad to see a business, and I don't care if it's 7-Eleven, because obviously, in this case, it's 7-Eleven. But you have, let's say, if we say underserved folks or lower-income folks who supported this store probably for 40 years, and then the store just kind of vanishes, and I understand, you know, when the new, bigger, better store comes in, you know, but it's hard to watch something like that happen, when the people themselves are the ones who kept it going for so long. You probably have folks that are sending their kids to college, and they probably got the big brick house in the suburbs somewhere, you know, that owned this store, who knows, you know? No disrespect to the owners and how it goes, or the corporation. They look at numbers, and that's what happens. They look at the numbers, and the numbers are not meeting. But my concern is, once the numbers are not good enough, what happened to the people? And I just wanted to touch base on that. And when we have, it opened my eyes to maybe when we have things that hit the table that need approval. You know, I don't know, somehow, if we can just engage in more, you know, these people being more a part of the community, instead of taking from the community. I'm just thinking, I'm thinking about all those apartment complexes around there, and we added a few more in the same area, and there's some other area back there that maybe come up for redevelopment sometime, all those townhouses. It's kind of like, those type of situations, it's like, so what? Because, you know, that's the bad neighborhood anyway, you know? And that's just my feeling on it. And like I said, that's corporate. I wish 7-Eleven could hear what I'm saying right now. But it's just, it's sad to know that, you know, folks would support something for so long, and it just, it goes away, and it's a need, a lot of people don't have transportation, you know, all kinds of situations. And something as simple as a 7-Eleven could just make the day better for those folks. So that's all I have. I don't really have anything besides, you know, my dissatisfaction with, you know, the outcome and what it could be for the people over there. So I just wanted to say that, and there's nothing we can do, but that's it, Mayor Greenlaw. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Withers.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm not sure there's something we can do. It might not be a 7-Eleven, but I'm just wondering if we couldn't target economic development, maybe to move a private store into that location. Like I say, it might not be a 7-Eleven, but a private, a person could probably operate on a lower profit margin, and maybe we could do something to incentivize
Exactly.
That kind of, that kind of thing. So Chuck, it might not be a 7-Eleven, but, you know, those little private stores sometimes are better than, better than chain stores.
Yeah, Mr. Withers, thank you for that comment, and I did ask the, and so the city knows, I'm not walking around trying to give away incentive money. I'm not walking around with a bookbag, just passing it to the stores. But I did ask the owner, and he's a great guy, and, you know, he told me his struggles with, you know, trying to stay there, and once, you know, once 7-Eleven itself says no, it's a no. And, you know, and I even asked, hey, you ever think about doing, you know, because the same thing happened on Lafayette Boulevard, that store went out of business, and, you know, and a little mart is open there now, but that's actually right on the Fredericksburg line, so that's actually considered as Pennsylvania. But the same thing over there, all the folks in Old Greenwich, and all through that area of Lafayette Boulevard, they supported that store for so many years, and, you know, it's like, I guess, when the bigger, better stores come in, you know, I've seen it where Fredericksburg Hardware and all of those folks went out of business, you know, went Home Depot and Lowe's, and I've seen it here, it's just, it's just sad when, you know, I just think about what the folks had to deal with. But, Mr. Withers, I'm willing to work with you on that, if we can, if we can get a discussion going, maybe with Mr. Freeland, the EDA, and Mr. Barudy, and Mayor Greenlaw, the whole council, something, some type of something to help out.
It does sound like a true economic development incentive opportunity. Counsel Duffy.
Thank you. I wonder if there's something we can do with the farmer's market, too, that we've had an outreach to Mayfield one day a week, and it's something that might help.
That's a good thought.
Thank you. On that end of town, they don't have easy access to it.
That's an excellent thought. Thank you. Now, does any councilor wish to remove anything from the consent agenda?
Move consent agenda as submitted.
Second.
Please cast your votes.
Motion passes seven-zero.
You have before you two sets of minutes, the public hearing of September 12th and the regular session of September 12th. Any additions or corrections to the minutes?
Madam Mayor, Tanya, did we make that? Good. Okay, good, thank you. I move for
Move approval.
For accepted minutes, approve the minutes.
Second.
Seconded, thank you. Please cast your votes.
Motion passes seven-zero.
We have appointments to a parking advisory committee. I'll call on Mr. Fawcett.
Yes, Mayor, in August, the council voted to create the parking advisory committee as an ongoing entity to succeed the parking task force in advising the council and the staff on parking issues. In the resolution you adopted in August, you set the representation for the parking advisory committee, and if you look at the table in the memorandum that was in your packet, you established that there would be two representatives of city council, two from the Economic Development Authority, one from Fredericksburg Main Street, one from the University of Mary Washington, and one at-large. The Economic Development Authority, Fredericksburg Main Street, and the University of Mary Washington have all submitted their recommendations for the appointment to the committee. Those names are listed at the very end of the memorandum. Vice Mayor Withers and Dr. Duffy represented the council on the parking task force, and although I certainly, they can certainly speak for themselves, but it's my understanding they are willing to continue to serve. And so the recommendation at the end of the memorandum there is that you appoint at least six of the seven members, so the group can begin work. I actually have some work for them to do very soon.
Okay. And we need to give you your help here.
Yes, sir.
All right. Counsel Devine.
Well, I think Mr. Kelly just moved, but I wanted to move that the at-large vacancy not be filled at this time, and that it be open for applications to be appointed at a later time, to allow for other people to have input and
I have no issue with that.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Do we have a second? Do we, counsel, Madam Clerk, what's the motion?
Counsel Kelly moved on the six names that are there.
And we're leaving the glass open for applications. Yeah.
Okay. So that's, agree, opponent by the second. All right, please vote.
Who's second?
Who's second?
Carrie.
Alice. Counsel Alice is the second.
Motion passes seven-zero.
All right. City manager's agenda, I believe we have some disclosures prior to item 11A.
Thank you. Before we consider item 11A, I want to state that I'm an assistant principal at Walker Grant Middle School in the Fredericksburg Public School System, and I am able to participate in this transaction fairly, objectively, and in the public interest.
Thank you, Mayor Greenlaw, for item 11A. I want to make my statement that my spouse is an employee of the Fredericksburg Public School System. I am able to participate in the transaction fairly, objectively, and in the public interest. Thank you.
That's right. That's it. All right, Mr. Whitley.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and members of the city council. Good evening. Item 11A is a second reading that adjusts the fiscal '17 budget for some items in the school grants fund that are sort of miscellaneous cleanup items, and then also the school bond-funded capital program to appropriate some additional funds to the Walker Grant Center project. The resolution also designates $410,000 of the unassigned general fund balance for a future resolution that will continue the process of sort of closing out the Walker Grant Center project. I would note that at the last meeting, there was some discussion about some of the issues that arose during the construction, one of which was asbestos removal, and we, I wanted to point out to council that we had a nice response in your packet from Mr. Russ of our friends at the school board. The summary of it is that there was an allowance made for asbestos removal at the start of the project, it was just not sufficient because they found more asbestos than they had planned. And then that, that overage was the owner's responsibility, which is us. So that's the short answer to the question, and I'm happy to answer any other questions.
Thank you. Counsel Kelly.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. More of a comment than a question. This was a nice chunk of money that went into this, and we, the council, are the ones that authorized the funding. So I'd hope when we move on projects like this in the future, especially for the schools we're about to build, looking at a new school, that this is brought to our attention before it's just presented to us as a bill, so we can have some input in the expenditure of city money. Thank you.
Thank you. As well of the council, this is the second read item.
Madam Mayor, I'll move approval upon second read, amending the fiscal year 2017 budget for final adjustments for schools.
Second.
Please cast your votes.
Motion passes seven-zero.
Item 11B, Mr. Nelson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. What you have before you is transmittal of information related to the high-speed rail project. High-speed rail is a national effort, several corridors have been improved to provide for enhanced rail service. Right now, the emphasis or the focus is on the rail corridor in Virginia from Washington, D.C. to North Carolina. And the, a draft environmental impact statement has been released, there was a 60-day commit period, and there are a certain number of items that we think the city council should request be addressed during this process, and what we would ask for is to submit this to you, and then we would develop something for action next month. There is going to be a public hearing held by the Virginia Department of Rail and Public Transportation, that'll be in Fredericksburg on October 18th. We would bring this to you after that date at your second meeting in October. But essentially, what we're looking at, the environmental impact statement covers a great variety of things, impacts on natural resources, impacts on historic resources, noise, issues, vibration, that kind of thing. A lot of those impacts will be addressed through the, through the regular process, but we think there are some additional items that the city council should consider and perhaps comment upon, and see if we can't get these items to be included as part of the rail project. Probably the most compelling is the Uh, probably the most, um, compelling is the viaducts, the four overpasses that, uh, the tracks, uh, cross, uh, they, they cross, um, Sophia, Caroline, Princess Anne, and Charles Streets. And the, uh, concrete, the condition of those viaducts has been an issue for an awful long time. Um, in discussions with CSX engineers, we learned that there is a potential for, rather than affecting those repairs from below, as has been done, uh, many times, uh, is to do them from above. And what it would entail would be removing the tracks, removing the ballast, and making repairs to the concrete structure from above, putting a membrane in place that would prevent, uh, water intrusion, and then put the tracks back and, uh, get them back into business. That's really not a feasible alternative or, or option until there's a third track in place. And so what we're suggesting is that, uh, recommending is that the council ask for that, uh, additional work to be done after the third track is in place and there is a route for, for rail travel. Um, it, it, this is an expensive proposition, but we think it's, it's viable and certainly necessary. And so we're, we're suggesting that that, uh, be done, which would be a, uh, sort of a, a, a final fix of something that's been, uh, been a pain for, for a great, uh, great period. In the interim, uh, there are some additional repairs that are going to be made by the VRE, but this, uh, again, those are, are good for a few years, but again, the intrusion of water, the freeze-thaw cycle, uh, causes problems. Uh, we're also suggesting that, uh, we look at enhanced, uh, bicycle pedestrian access around the station, sound mitigation, we think is important. There's currently a sound wall, uh, adjacent to cobblestone, and what we hear from the neighborhood is the echo into their neighborhood is rather substantial. So we're, we're, we're suggesting that we look at a, a sound wall to, uh, to sort of encase the tracks in that area, and then certainly down by the Mayfield community, uh, there's chain link fence, there's, uh, a, uh, lots of trees, but we think a sound wall really is appropriate, uh, in that neighborhood as well. Uh, be happy to answer questions. Uh, this is, again, is, again, is a transmittal, and we'll be bringing, uh, bringing something back for action in October, certainly be happy to entertain, uh, further ideas. And if anybody wants to read a portion of the environmental impact statement, I have a portion of it.
A portion of it, this thing. Yeah. Um, any questions, Counsel Ferrari?
No question, Mayor Greenlaw, but I do have a comment. Um, I, I hope that everything works out with the sound wall, because that's been a, it's been requested for a long time, and you wouldn't believe that even when the, uh, the fence and the trees appeared, uh, you know, that was probably number 10 on the list, but the sound wall had always been number one. So, you know, hopefully that'll work out. Um, I just wanted to say that, so, thanks.
Sound walls are very expensive, but if we could roll it into the, into this project, we're hopeful.
Right, yeah. Um, before I call on Mr. Nelson for the next item, I'm going to embarrass him by saying that he has done a wonderful job of presenting transportation issues to groups in town, and I've received a lot of compliments on your presentation. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, proposed transportation alternatives project, Mr. Nelson?
This is a, uh, the Transportation Alternative Program, uh, is, provides modest amounts of money, um, a million dollars being modest, um, for, for various projects. And what we've done is, is taken the City Council's, um, goals and objectives and, uh, addressed priority number 12, which is to, um, begin to make connections, uh, in the neighborhoods. And I, uh, City Managers assured me that I get extra points for referencing a council priority in my presentation. The, the trail system that we have in place, the Heritage Trail, the VCR Trail, Cowan Boulevard, and so, those, those are, those are, those have been the easy ones because they're, they're done on a, on, on a road alignment. Now, making the connections between the two is, is more challenging because we don't have that, the room to play with. What we're recommending, uh, that we pursue for funding is a connection that would connect, um, the VCR Trail with the Heritage Trail following the Sophia Street Corridor, uh, Sophia Street, and then a portion of, of Caroline Street. The challenge is that the, um, the right-of-way is, is already defined, and if we're looking to put bicycle trails down, there's a potential that we, or there is a consideration of maybe we would remove a certain amount of parking to allow for a bicycle route. Removing parking is, is not always a good option, uh, especially in downtown where we're trying to enhance parking. So we're looking at things like sharrows, uh, where bicycles would share the, uh, would share the travel lane. Uh, that works best on roads that aren't main avenues, such as Caroline and Princess Anne Street. We think Sophia Street is, 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 uh, suitable for that, and certainly the portion of, uh, of Caroline Street. So what we're looking at is to, uh, submit an application that would allow, um, a careful analysis of that corridor, uh, options developed for how they would be, how a, a safe bicycle route would be identified, um, crosswa, or, uh, pedestrian signals where needed. Uh, this will tie in, uh, with the Riverfront Park, it'll tie in with the Chatham Bridge that is being, uh, improved to allow for bicycle pedestrian access as well. And so we're, we're recommending that we, uh, be allowed to pursue this project through transportation alternative application that would be due at the end of October. So we would, uh, bring this back to you in October for resolution and public hearing. I'll answer questions.
Um, Vice Mayor Withers?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Eric, for your work. This would not be, uh, these funds would not be tied to doing away with parking spaces, would they?
Well, that would be something we would have to, to, to talk about.
Yeah. From, from Lafayette Boulevard to William Street, we would end up losing over fifty parking places on the, uh, east side of, uh...
Right. That's why I mentioned the sharrows as a viable alternative to that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It would be hard for me to support anything that would cost us lose, uh, almost sixty parking places downtown. Also, it would be hard for me to support, uh, doing away with parking in front of the houses in the, what, fifteen, sixteen, whatever that block is, of, uh, of Caroline Street. So I just want to, you know, tell you that upfront, I'm all in on the bicycles, on the share lanes, but taking away parking downtown in, in front of people's homes on Caroline Street is something that, that wouldn't get my attention. Thank you, but thank you, thank you for your work.
I tend to agree with you, but I, I had to throw it out.
Sure, I understand. Thank you.
Counselor Duffy?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just want to also point out, I, I hope maybe before we just paint the shareo, uh, figure on the roads, that we might also think of doing things that make those streets safer bike, for bikes. I don't know what that might be, but I'm concerned that that doesn't really make it safer for bikes, but...
Right. There are a variety of things, uh, signage, uh, lighting, um, there, there are things that people do that we can certainly incorporate. Yes, sir.
Any further questions from Mr. Nelson? Thank you very much. Item 11D, Michelle Hoss?
Madam Mayor? Because they can't hear me. Thank you, Eric. Um, good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. Um, what you're looking at is a, um, proposed ordinance to add Ficklin Island. I think most of you know where Ficklin Island is. It's the four-point-eight acres of land located along the Rappahannock River that's right off Riverside Drive, kind of near the Indian Punchbowl. Although this property is not designated as a park, a lot of the community already uses it for gatherings and just outdoor recreation. They have picnics and that sort of thing. Unfortunately, it does create some trash and some vandalism, um, and some issues with maintenance of the property. One of the things, um, is that Ficklin Island is the one piece of property that the city owns along the, the riverfront that has not been named, uh, designated as part of the riparian land and watershed property. So we're asking that you name it designated as such, and it would be much more helpful for law enforcement to have all the various prohibitions that are all grouped into one ordinance, so it's all in one place. So when Officer Joe Young gets out there, um, he can, instead of citing various codes, he's got the one ordinance that, that works to his advantage. Um, this allows mainly, it's the same things, they can't dump burial burned garbage, there's no campfires, there's no hunting allowed on this property, or that sort of thing. So we are recommending that we add Ficklin Island to the description of the city's riparian and watershed property.
Yes, Ms. Devine?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I have two questions. One is, how do we convey this to the public? Other is, is conveying it through Officer Young the method, or are we going to temporarily sign something? Or how are we going to convey to people who've been hanging out there and perhaps vandalizing or trashing it that it's going to be changed?
Well, we do not, we already have signage up. There is already signage listed, uh, along the thing that says no camping, you know, no overnight camping, no campfires. So this has all been posted. It just sort of gives him one ordinance that he gets to list. Um, we can certainly put it on, I guess, our website, certainly put it on the parks, parks website, or even the city website. Um, it, it doesn't, we're not really changing any of the rules that are there, it's just being designated at this, as part of the watershed and riparian land.
Okay. I guess I'm wondering if, um, along Riverside Drive may be a temporary to remind people or something, I don't know, something that just indicates to people that...
Sure.
That we... Um, I had, I guess my other question, and I'm not sure the best way to address this, but I, um, as, as good as our officers are at, um, enforcing our laws, there seems to still be a little bit of a breakdown when things go to court, and I'm not sure how best to address that. But, um, we increased our fines, um, recently, and that is not necessarily being followed through in the court system. And so I, um, I think it's something that we just need to address a little bit further. So, just throw that in there. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, move it on first read.
Please cast your votes. Thank you, Michelle Hoss.
Counselor Devine?
Um, Counselor Devine?
Are you voting?
Thank you.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you. Um, I'll call on Mr. Fawcett for a first read on an ordinance.
Okay. This is, um, first read of an ordinance prohibiting the securing of bicycles, benches, trash receptacles, and other items to trees, streetlights, street signs, and other public facilities in the public right-of-way. I've been desperately searching for a council priority that I could tie this to, but I haven't ever found one. So, Council Fifty, Fifty-two, I think it is, probably. Um, as is stated in the memo, and I'll be very brief in respect of, uh, the lateness of the hour, um, this is a, um, a codification of, of a practice of the Public Works Department for many years. The Public Works Department has relied in the past on its general authority to maintain the public right-of-way, to protect trees, streetlight posts and others from damage and from obstructions in the public right-of-way when we remove, when the Public Works Department removes bicycles or other items that have been chained either by bicycle chains or cables or some other means to public property. So this would codify that, uh, that restriction, that prohibition. There is an exception for, uh, the proper placement of bicycles at bicycle racks in the, in the, in the public right-of-way. We certainly encourage that and have installed bicycle racks for that purpose, but does set a seven-day time limit to leave a, a bicycle at a, a public bike rack. We occasionally have an issue where someone considers the public bike rack to be their storage place for their bicycle for the entire winter, and we, we don't want to encourage that type of, uh, of behavior either. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Um, I'll ask one real quickly, if I may. Um, are we going to put more bike racks up?
We don't have any immediate plans to put more bikes, bike racks up, although the current ones seem to get, uh, pretty good use. Uh, I'm not personally aware of recent, uh, contacts of saying we'd like to have one where we don't have one. We're certainly open to ideas on that. Bike racks are a very, uh, inexpensive, uh, uh, amenity to provide, and, and we can, Public Works can install them with, with our own crews. So we're certainly open to suggestions on that. And I think there may be some more in the downtown improvement, uh, project that's, that's forthcoming.
Madam Mayor, I could just add quickly, FAMPO has also taken up a bike study of the city of Fredericksburg. We're soon to see that bike study. It should come with, uh, some recommendations for additional bike rack locations, so more to come on bicycles.
Okay. Did I, Counselor Devine?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. That was one of my questions. The other is, if people are adding trash receptacles to downtown, then I guess that's another area to look at, that perhaps we need to add additional, um, trash and recycling receptacles if people are, businesses are adding them. But I had one more question or comment about the, uh, bikes, and, um, and I'm not recalling exactly what the program is called, but DC is adding, um, a program like self-locking bicycles rather than, um, you know, shared bicycles with like a self-locking program. And so, how, how would we address something like that with this? That bikes wouldn't be chained, but they were perhaps left in a spot for a certain period of time? Like, how much time would we give before we remove something like that?
Well, um, first of all, bike share has been proposed, uh, and discussed in the city. There were a couple of entrepreneurs approached the Pathways Steering Committee, uh, probably two years ago, and, uh, we had some good discussions, and, and they eventually withdrew, decided it wasn't economically feasible then in Fredericksburg, and I don't know that the situation has changed. Uh, if, if we were to adopt a bike share program, then certainly, I think, uh, it would have to be factored into this. Uh, the intent here is not to prevent people from parking bicycles and bicycle racks, it's to prevent them from chaining them to trees and streetlights, and, and, and traffic signal poles and so forth. So, uh, we, I'm sure we would work with a, a bike share program. If it was a private entrepreneur, they would probably need a franchise from the city, city attorney, uh, to operate, and certainly during those discussions, we could, we could address issues such as that.
Yes. Counselor Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Everybody's on the, what's the future of bicycles in Fredericksburg? Um, yeah, FAMPO is looking at the whole bike share and, and other things. But to the, that point, one thing I want to point out is our sister city in Germany, which is bike central. I mean, everybody rides their bike to the train station, you have hundreds of bicycles laying there as they get on the trains and go to work. Um, but, you know, everybody looks to us as government to provide. In Schweitzeg, in every business, the first thing a businessman does in the mornings, he walks out, brushes, sweeps out his sidewalk, and then rolls out his bike rack with his little sign for his business on it, and sticks it in front of his business. So this might be something that Main Street can check up out a little bit, but the bigger problem we have is, Doug, is our sidewalks, especially downtown, where we want everybody to be coming down to, the sidewalks are very, well, shall we say, not really conducive to bike racks and storage, and that's something that we are going to have to address because we seem to be moving in this direction of getting people out of cars now into the bicycles.
Well, certainly, the, the, the existence of obstructions on our sidewalks is a concern, and it's, I don't want to say it's the reason, but it's a reason we don't have more bike racks downtown. If you look and see the ones we installed several years ago, they are on some of the widest sidewalks downtown. And that's the other, uh, purpose of this ordinance, is not only to prevent damage from bikes that are chained improperly, but to prevent the bicycles themselves from being an obstruction on narrow or on, on sidewalks. Because, uh, if, if a person chains a bike to a tree, walks away from it, and an hour later, somebody bumps into that and knocks the bike over, then you've got a bike laying on the sidewalk chained to the tree. And we do experience those types of things as well. So that's another reason that we would like, that we would propose adding this specific language to the city code.
And one last comment is, the only thing I've seen, and when we were down in Savannah and/or, and down south in some of the communities, what they do in their case is they put bump outs to put the bike racks in, the parked bikes, but then you're starting down the road of, how many parking spaces do you eliminate? This is going to be an interesting discussion on how we kind of integrate bicycles into our eighteenth-century light-out downtown. But we'll, we'll talk about that more, I guess, in the next few months.
Vice Mayor Withers?
I don't want to carry this too far, I don't want to carry this too far, but I noticed in Greenville and, and, uh, the other little, Andersonville, there, there... their Main Street travelways are very narrow, and what they've done, they've extended their sidewalks out into the streets. It's traffic calming also. You don't see people going down the street very fast, but you got narrower lanes, and they've made good use of that. I would not be opposed to seeing people driving down Caroline Street 15 miles narrower than 30, quite frankly, and running red lights, but that's just a thought. See, we don't need to get into that tonight.
Yeah, this ordinance will not prevent that.
All right, Council Frye.
I just want to add something real quick. I thought I had a picture, but I don't have it, Mr. Fawcett, but there's a perfect, I think, example of, it's kind of a futuristic-looking bike rack when we get to that point, but there's a standalone Walmart grocery store on 610 in Stafford. I don't know what they call it.
Marketplace.
Yeah, there you go. Marketplace? Walmart Marketplace, okay. But it's further up 610, and if you could make a note of that, check out their bike racks up there, that they have up there, but it's not the Gavin eyes still, what we see right now in these big blocks of, it's actually a bike rack that looks like a bike, and it's, I haven't seen it in the cities, but it's kind of like 2018-ish for bike racks.
All righty. What's Council Swell?
Madam Mayor, moving on first read.
Please cast your votes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Before I recognize the city manager, I'd like to thank Officers Morris and Schaefer for being with us this evening. May, oh, who else? Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Speaking of police officers, I do want to commend the Police Department for, again, hosting a pedestrian safety event. They did that on September 9th. About 100 people showed up. Obviously, they're stressing pedestrian safety downtown, so we thank them for that, and thank you to the community for participating. Also, highlight the fact that the parking lot at Bass Ellison has been repaved. We also have a painting project underway and some new signage, so we're obviously spending some time at Bass Ellison to make it more appropriate and livable for our employees and our residents and users. Also mention that the emergency operations center has now moved from its old location at Fire Station 2 to the police headquarters. It's a great collaborative effort between PD and our fire department. Staff just met on site to review the EOC. It is top-notch, and I assure you, staff is ready to act in the case of an emergency, so we're delighted for that upgrade at the Police Department. Also mentioned as quickly, we have five downtown intersections that have been upgraded with new lighting. Folks should be seeing those, new masks coming up as we speak. That's a nice upgrade for downtown as well. It should be completed, that project, certainly by early next month. Also mentioned, the Parks Department for their great work, another successful soggy doggy, yes, I said soggy doggy swim. About 250 of our four-legged friends did participate in the pool for their annual event, again, at Doris Buffett Pool. A great event, a great community event. They also are hosting picnic in the park. That series began on September 12th and runs through October 3rd. We encourage the community to participate on Tuesdays from 11:30 to 1:30. A great time to get out to Herkamp Park. With that, I will close. Thank you, Madam Mayor. We also have a calendar for your attention, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
And we might note some extra work session meetings in there on the calendar. If there's nothing more to come before this party, we are adjourned.